Good evening to you and to the people of Guam. Today is Monday, December 18, 2023. This town hall will be conducted by myself, Senator William A. Parkinson, Chairman of the Committee on Fire, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities, Public Transit, Unemployment Insurance, and Universal Health Insurance. This town hall is called to order, and the time is 5:44. For the record and to comply with the open government law, notice of this hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets on Monday, December 11, 2023. And the second notice was also shared to all local media on Thursday, December 14, 2023. Notice of this hearing was also posted and available on the Guam Legislature's website and the government of Guam public notice portal. The purpose of this town hall is to give the public and the people of MTM the opportunity to file your damage claims on electrical appliances pursuant to public law 2221. GPA customer service representatives are joining us tonight, and I thank them for coming out to help you on how to file damage claims for any household appliances, broken or damaged because of power issues such as load shedding. I would like to welcome GPA today, and I would like to welcome everybody from the village of MTM that came as well. I appreciate you taking the time out of your busy lives to come be part of this process. We will now hear testimony and discussion, which I will start by giving my opening statement. Public law 2221 authored by my father, the late Speaker Don Parkinson, set the parameters of the appliance damage claim process with the Guam Power Authority when such damage is proximally caused by power surges, voltage fluctuations, or frequency fluctuations in the power supplied by GPA. My father wrote this law to be consumer-friendly, and I want to read this law in its entirety so people who are seeing this for the first time understand the program. Authority liable for damage. The authority shall be liable for damage caused to electrical appliances and devices when such damage is proximally caused by power surges, voltage fluctuations, or frequency fluctuation in the power supplied by the authority to a consumer, and when such damage is not a result of any negligence on the part of the consumer and is not a result of an otherwise defective appliance or electrical device. Except for computer equipment or equipment for which the manufacturer recommends that a voltage protection device, surge protector, or power conditioning device be installed by the consumer, the authority may not require the usage of voltage protection devices, surge protectors, or power conditioners, and may not raise the failure to use such devices as a defense to claim for damages arising out of voltage or frequency fluctuations or power surges. In establishing liability for damages pursuant to this section, the consumer need only prove that the appliance or electrical device was damaged by a variation of voltage or variation of frequency or a surge in power supplied by the authority. The authority may raise as an affirmative defense proof that the appliance or electrical device in question was defective or that the fluctuation of energy or frequency or power surge was not caused by the authority but was in fact caused by the consumer's electrical wiring system or devices or equipment belonging to the consumer. It shall be an affirmative defense for the authority to establish that the quality of power delivered to the consumer's meter was satisfactory. Any consumer claiming damages from the authority who relies upon the provision of this section must file such a claim with the authority within 90 days of the date of the alleged damage. Otherwise, except for the shortened period in which to make a claim, the procedures contained in the Government of Guam Claims Act shall apply to claims brought pursuant to this section to the extent not otherwise inconsistent herewith. This section shall be effective only as the damage is occurring after the date that this section becomes law. And that is the entirety of the Damage Claims Law. In today's increasingly interconnected world, the reliability and consistency of our electrical grid are not just conveniences but necessities. Load shedding, while sometimes necessary to maintain grid stability, can have unintended and costly consequences for ratepayers. The damage to appliances resulting from such power disruptions can place a significant financial burden on households and businesses alike. In recognition of this, we firmly support the enforcement of a compensation program for ratepayers who suffer appliance damages due to load shedding. The program represents not only a fair and equitable approach to mitigating the adverse effects of power management strategies, but also reinforces the trust and relationship between power providers and consumers. By compensating ratepayer for such damages, utility companies can demonstrate their commitment to customer welfare and responsible service provision. This program is not just about financial recompense. It is about acknowledging the essential role that stable and reliable power play in our daily lives and the importance of protecting consumers from the unforeseen impacts of necessary grid management practices. It is a step towards a more resilient, consumer-focused approach to energy management, ensuring that the burdens of maintaining grid stability are not disproportionately borne by the individual taxpayers. In the face of these challenges posed by load shedding, it is not only essential to address the direct impacts of consumers, particularly in terms of appliance damage, but also to ensure that the process governing compensation are rooted in transparency and fairness. Transparency in this context means clear, accessible information about how to claim compensation, straightforward criteria for eligibility, and an open accountable process for the assessment and reimbursement of claims. A transparent program fosters trust and confidence among consumers, demonstrating that utility providers and regulatory authorities are acting with the integrity and the best interest of the public. It also ensures that all affected parties are aware of their rights and the support available to them, thereby enhancing the overhaul effectiveness of the program. Furthermore, transparency is vital in ensuring that the program is administered equitably, with all claims being treated consistently and fairly. It also provides a framework for accountability where ratepayers could seek redress if they feel their claims have not been handled appropriately. We believe that by committing to clear, fair, and open processes, GPA can significantly mitigate the adverse effects of load shedding on consumers and maintain a positive and trustful relationship with the public. To this end, I've requested records to approvals and denials from GPA, which my office has now received, and the public process requires public scrutiny. And we will follow your damage claims filed today as they go through the process and ensure fairness and integrity. So at this time, I'd like to hand the mic over to GPA and recognize them at this time to share any comments or points of discussion they'd like to bring up.
Thank you, Senator, and welcome, everybody. My name is Tracy Lim Tiyako. I'm from GPA. I am the Assistant General Manager of Administration. And I have here James Borha. He's our customer service manager. And thank you, Senator, for recognizing our great customer service team over here on the side. So with that, I'm going to turn over the microphone to James.
Good evening, Senator. Thank you. I would like to go over the damage claim process and frequently ask questions. About damage claims, if you believe your electrical appliances and devices have been damaged as a result of power surges, voltage fluctuations, or frequency fluctuations in the power supplied by the Guam Power Authority, you can file a claim. The claim must be filed with the Guam Power Authority within 90 days of the alleged damage. If it is determined that the damage to your electrical appliances was caused by something within Guam Power Authority's control, you may be eligible to receive compensation. What is GPA's responsibility regarding a damage claim? We must determine how the incident happened, whether or not GPA caused it, the extent of your damages. We evaluate each claim based on the information you provide in our investigation, which involves reviewing the completed damage claim form, invoices, estimates, and receipts from a licensed technician, assessment of damaged appliances, reviewing trouble calls or logs and meter data for any power disruptions on the date and time of the alleged damage. Who is eligible for a claim? Any GPA customer who has suffered damages that they believe are a result of power surges, voltage fluctuations, or frequency fluctuations in the power supplied by GPA may file a claim. This includes residential, commercial, and industrial customers. All eligible claims will be awarded to the GPA account holder. What types of damages are eligible for a claim? Eligible claims may include damage caused to electrical appliances and devices when caused by power surges, voltage fluctuations, or frequency fluctuations in power supplied by the authority. It is important to note that outages without associated fluctuations typically do not cause damage to electrical items. However, our team at GPA possesses tools to assess whether there were fluctuations in the power to your home or business during the time of the incident. What types of damages are not eligible for a claim? Damages that occur due to acts of nature such as typhoons, floods, earthquakes, lightning, or animal and insect infestations. Any damage caused by an act of nature is beyond the reasonable control of the authority and is not eligible for a claim. How do I file a claim? To file a claim, you may visit our website and look under "How do I file a claim" to get you to the Damage Claims link. Complete the Damage Claim Form and email the completed form with estimates and/or receipts to damageclaims@gpa-gwa.com, or visit any of the GPA locations and speak with a customer service representative. Is there a time limit for filing a damage claim? Yes, for your damage claim to be valid, it must be filed with GPA within 90 days of the incident that may have caused damage to your appliance or device. What information do I need to file a claim? You will need to provide your name, account number, service location, mailing address, contact information, list of appliances and/or equipment, the time and date of incident, and description of the incident that occurred. What documentation is required when filing a claim? When filing a damage claim, it is crucial to provide supporting documentation including photographs of the damage, estimates, or invoices for repairs. How long does it take to process a damage claim? At GPA, it is our policy to respond to claims promptly and fairly pursuant to Guam Public Law 22-21. However, the processing time for damage claims varies depending on the complexity of the case. You may be contacted for additional information if needed. To ensure an efficient claims process, we recommend you do the following. Provide all necessary and appropriate information regarding the claim. Promptly respond to GPA's request for information or documentation. Retain copies of all invoices or estimates and/or receipts for repairs and parts replacement. Keep damaged appliance in storage until your claim has been resolved. What happens after I submit my damage claim? After submitting your damage claim, it will be reviewed by our Claims Committee. GPA's Claims Committee is comprised of members that include line electricians, technicians, power system dispatchers, and engineers who may require an inspection to validate your claim. You may be contacted for additional information if needed. The team reviews how the incident happened, whether or not it was caused by the electricity supplied by the authority, the extent of your damages, and once the review is complete, you will receive notification regarding the outcome of your claim. Will GPA pay for my new device or appliance? The Damage Claims Program covers the cost of repairs or the depreciated value of the appliance or device. Depreciation is calculated using the depreciation guide for personal property and building materials. Is there an appeals process if claim is denied? GPA evaluates all claims fairly. If your claim is denied, we will explain the reason for the denial in a letter mailed to you. You also have the right to appeal within 90 days from letter of notice to GPA's Utility Services Administrator. How can I contact GPA about my claim or for further assistance? For additional assistance or increase related to damage claims, visit our customer service centers for assistance or contact our call center at area code 671-647-5787. Our dedicated team is here to assist you throughout the claims process. Thank you.
Senator, I wanted to, sorry, wanted to thank you again for collaborating with us. We have been to, this will be our fourth town hall meeting, and then tomorrow is our town hall meeting at the Timooning Senior Center from 5:30 to 7:30. I also wanted to add that we are and we do continue to review our process, our damage claim process. We, for the intent of simplifying, we want to continue to maintain accountability, and we want to improve our transparency. And we are learning and we are hearing what a lot of folks have suggested. And the top two suggestions that really do come up is, one, to prioritize medical devices. So any damage to medical devices, any claims for that, we would like to prioritize that. And two, just to make it overall easier to file. So whether that is easier from a technology standpoint to be able to apply online or to make it easier to submit documentation, to make it easier to find out the status of your claims. So I wanted to thank you and let you know that we are looking at that process. Technology, make it easier to file and to also track your claim.
All right. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to anybody from the community who has any questions or comments or anything they'd like to share with the committee or with GPA here. All right. Go ahead, sir.
Is the 90-day rule. How flexible is the 90-day rule? Number one. Number two, when you talk about fluctuations and brownouts and whatever that may have caused damages to the appliances that we want to file a claim, does GPA have a grid tracking, especially of what the power situations have been going on in Mungmung, Toto, and Maiti, that will be able to analyze and put claims against submittals? The third thing that I would like to identify, you've pointed out medical devices. With medical devices, I can understand the need and the priority for that. But what about people that may have appliances that are not easily replaced because they're built into the units and they come in with the cabinets? And the only way that you continue to bake or use a microwave, you may not have the ability to buy a secondary standalone or to be able to even place it somewhere in your own because a wall-mounted device was, came with the home, and now we are faced with a replacement. And the replacement is not easy because the frame that holds the wall mounted is restricted by the size of the opening. So to find a replacement unit that matches that whole opening without having to go through major renovations to the cabinets, how can that be justified and accounted for? So I asked GPA to find out what are the considerations or the flexibilities to what you file on the claims. Those are my bullet points of concern, and I would like to see how can remediate as a consumer to GPA. Living here in Mungmung, we've had power transformers that go out. We've had lost feed of power where there are three lines that are feeding, and all of a sudden, we lose one leg and the power dims. It reduces substantially where you can see it's a power situation. Then the transformer pops. Okay? So transformer replacements because of equipment failure or things that may backfeed into a home or homes that causes failure of equipment, how do you compensate for such items in those areas? The last thing, if I may say, is I just found out in order to make a claim, I need to have a certified electrician accompany my claim and my report in order for it to even be recognized. So now I'm looking for a certified electrician, if I can find one, that will come and assess the replacement of my equipment or to find out the manufacturers are available to supply the replacements of electronic board. My system is dependent on an electronic board. Okay, you don't have to replace the whole unit. You just replace the electronic board, and you should be up and running. Okay? I mean, I've worked in the telecommunications fields for many, many years, and I know what electricity and power does when you're in telecommunications. So I asked GPA with the rigidness of their procedures and their policy and asked for you, your good Senator, to basically try to analyze what is fair, what is good, how much is flexibility are there for our consumers and people such as myself, if there's anyone else that want to add to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for those questions. Regarding the 90-day rule, the 90-day rule, it is in the law, so we are following the law itself. And you heard the Senator read it. So claims must be filed within 90 days. If you start your claim and you don't have all of the documentation to accompany the claim, we will take your application as is, put a claim number on it, and then we will follow up, as we do a lot, to get some of the documentation. In past town hall meetings, we have acknowledged that a lot of people do not have, for instance, the receipt for their appliance. So we acknowledge that. I'll tell you right now, I don't know where my receipts are for my appliances. I'm sure I put it in a safe place or I may have lost it. So things like not having your receipt, James and his team, they do work with you on that. In the FAQs, we do have a book that a lot of claims adjusters use to find out what the lifespan of your appliances. Without the receipt, we can generally find the manufacturer's suggested retail price. But we do need the make and model, any information on your appliance. So whether it's a refrigerator, a microwave, a washer, dryer, generally, they have a little, there's an area there that you could take a picture, and it has model number. It has all of that information that would help our customer service folks. Regarding the fluctuations, brownouts, and how we analyze claims, GPA does have, we put in, it's about 10 years now, smart grid technology. So a lot of them, if you notice, we don't have meter readers that come out to read your meters anymore. The meters do communicate with our system every 15 minutes. So we did bring here, for instance, a part of a real claim, and these are part of the documentation that does go in to the claim. You heard James discuss the team, the Claims Team, which also consists of our engineers that are Engineering Division. And so here, we do analyze the voltage, the frequency, anything else from your meter. And here, this is part of the claim. You can see, for those that can't read, it's okay. But you can see the yellow highlights. And these are the areas where the engineers said, yes, there was an anomaly in your power. And so it does match the claim. And so this is how we verify, and one of the ways, we verify the customer's claim. You did ask about medical devices, and you suggested that we consider built-in appliances and any other appliances that are difficult to put in. We do not, at this point, consider that. We do consider the age of your appliance, and we use the information that we have either through you or with the information you can give to us to help us figure out what is the depreciation rate and the lifespan of that appliance based on the manufacturer and industry standards. You did talk about transformers and outages, losing one phase of power. So again, going back to the grid analysis, we do run analysis on the power quality, and we are able to see that. James also discussed trouble logs. So that's our industry standard of when something does happen, we do send out a crew. And so that, all of that, all of that activity is documented. So it's really, it really is very important that you give us a day and then a timeframe. And I realize that it's, sometimes it's difficult. We understand this. It's your, maybe your microwave was working when you left for the morning. You come back, it's dinner time. You realize that it's not working. So we just need that timeframe. So, you know, if it happened Monday, the 20th of January, sometime between 8:00 and 4:00, that's a timeframe that we would look at your meter data.
Thank you for your comments, sir. GPA, do you have anything you'd like to respond to?
Thank you for your comments, sir. I, that's not the first time I've heard comments about the 90-day process. And, you know, one of the things I think about as I've been going through this process with the town halls is this law is decades old, and there are some considerations that the law could never have made when it was first written. Namely, the one that comes off the top of my head is the proliferation of medical devices, not just the quantity, but the variety of them. So I can understand how that would make certain requirements such as looking for a certified technician to be very challenging. What if you, what if what breaks is a very complicated medical device that technician is not rated to make judgments on? that technician is not rated to make judgments on? Then what does the person do for their claims then? So there's certainly a lot that could be tweaked and updated for these laws now that, you know, we've seen how it plays out in practice, as well as some of the deficiencies that have shown over time as the times change. So too must the laws and the mechanisms that govern the times. Is there anybody else who would like to ask GPA any questions or share any comments? Go ahead, sir. Could you please speak into the, we need you to speak into the microphone, sir. We're trying to record this for the public hearing. And it has trouble catching the voices just in the hallway.
Who are you, ma'am? I didn't get your name. Yes, Senator and ma'am, you know, I understand that, I used to work for power for NAPAC, very honest. And I worked in partnership with GPA. And I know we only have one power source. We don't have a grid system like in the states where it can be far from different states. So my question is, with vegetation issues, snakes, you know, typhoons, I wondered if, I'm always looking for technology. So like on my power panel, I installed some protection to cover the whole panel. So and typically, when I noticed a brownout, we lost one phase. I'm telling my, I educated my family to hurry up and turn on the main breaker. Because I know you guys are busy, and you got a while to take care of. But I was wondering if GPA would maybe think about offering protective devices that we can install in the main panel to protect the whole house from brownouts or surges. Because you know, when I, when I'm looking at products, I just wonder if GPA maybe think of picking out of the box, offer the, offer some kind of protective devices for the power system to protect the microwave, the TV, the refrigerator?
Yeah, thank you, sir. Those were great, great suggestions. GPA, as you heard the senator say, under the damage claims law, we are, we cannot require customers to have whole-house surge protectors or conditioners. But that is a great, great idea to offer it, right? Yep, you're absolutely correct. Right. And Mr. Adda, that's a good point. So as you already know, for Navy, Navy's a transmission-level customer. So DZSP, any of the BOSS contractors do take care of the distribution side. So that, so that's interesting. Regarding, regarding some of the protective devices, you are, you are right personally, although this is not part of the damage claims. I, I got, I use those $25 plugins, and I put my refrigerator in there, and it's a GFCI, so that it does trip before any, anything else happens. Again, personal experience out from GPA, whenever I buy replacement air conditioners, I do get, depending on the vendor, they do suggest that instead of using, well, to basically put my GPA rebate toward using the voltage or buying voltage protectors. And that, that does, it does absolutely save on your air conditioners, right? Right. And we, you know, we, I know we're here to talk about power quality. And Mr. Aseki had mentioned the technician. We find that in a lot of cases, especially where the claims are denied, we do find that a lot of, when the technician comes out, they do find things like lizards in the, in the voltage protector or in the, in the panels. And infestation in the main panel itself that has been eating away at, you know, some of the, some of the wiring sheath. And then it does get, it merges together, fuses together. Before I forget, Mr. Adda, you had mentioned announcing any phase losses. Something, again, that's not part of damage claim is we do have a program called Power Alerts. And we will be happy to give you that information. I believe it's also on some of our flyers over here. With Power Alerts, it's an SMS system. It's a two-way SMS system. The account holder just opts in to Power Alerts. It's free. And whenever there is an outage that affects your area, so your meter, so it's your feeder, your circuit, you do get a text. So the text says, for instance, if it's load shedding, you know, there'll be load shedding. You can also report an outage. So if you're having a hard time calling dispatch and getting through, I do understand, we have 52,000 customers. And so when something happens, even if it's 100 customers, all, let's say even half of them, 50 customers are trying to call the same number to get through. So it is, it does get very challenging. With Power Alerts, you can use the SMS, and you can just text out. And the dispatcher will now receive that into its system, and they know that you are calling. You are right, with all of the grid technology that we have today, we can see a lot, but we can't see everything. Yeah. So, so when you, when you do say, hey, I'm out of power, you know, that really does help our dispatchers with, understand exactly what, who is affected and how large that population is. More than one street light, right? Otherwise, if it's just one street light, it could be the, it could just be the photocell. Okay, I'll speak with our engineering division, and that's a great, great suggestion. Thank you.
Sorry, if I may add to a comment that was just brought up. You talked about these protective.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who would like to share some comments or ask some questions or share with us anything in general? So as we've been going through this area, there have been a number of notable problem areas that have presented themselves. The added complexity of medical devices, as you say, problems with the ease of filing, and complexity of broken appliances in multi-appliance units. So those are definitely things that we are going to have to talk about. As we said in the last town hall, this is a very old law. And it can, it couldn't have accounted for all the changes that were going to happen in the next 20 to 30 years. So there might be some areas that we can streamline it, especially in the areas of the certified technician. Because with, with the different complexities of all these appliances, it's not like the 90s anymore where they were all very simple thing. Everything is a smart system, it seems, these days. You know, I feel like I could play Legend of Zelda on my fridge sometimes, you know, with all the bells and whistles they put on these things. So that's one area we're definitely going to have to address. And also just, you know, we also really need to look at the 90-day portion of it. Because I, I too agree that, you know, that's, that's a little tight, especially with all the documentation and when trying to hunt down a certified technician. And with, with so many people experiencing the same problem, there might just be a problem in finding technicians, period, if they just got so much work, you know? Sometimes it's a worker's market like that. And just so we could reiterate for the public, I asked this question of you, and I just want to confirm. From what I hear in your frequently asked questions, the things, the two things it seems that would help the most in getting these claims off the ground would be either a receipt for the damaged item or at least the make and model of it, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And also that the other key component is the approximate date of the energy event that damaged the appliance?
Yes.
Okay. So for the viewing public at home, if you can, at the very least, get those two factors, there are other considerations that need to go into play. But those two, I feel, would go a long way towards helping get your claims off the ground successful. There were a number of very good suggestions. One of the things that we're looking at, especially with the medical devices, because I myself am someone who has a medical device. I was diagnosed with sleep apnea like this year when I finally got insurance for the first time in my adult life. And I got a BiPAP machine. And it turns out, for 18 years, I've been getting a really bad night's sleep. And it was like a big change in quality of my life to have such a medical device. And I would just be absolutely devastated if it was damaged because of a load shedding event. And understanding the timelines of this process could, you know, at the best of times, if everything goes well, this process still takes a month. So if you have a legitimate medical device claim, that's a long time to be waiting for relief because these devices aren't cheap. But most of them run into the four, possibly five digits. And so maybe one of the things that we could talk about is maybe some sort of preapproval process for medical devices. Because I'm sure there's not that many claims for medical devices. So I would be, I, I would be generally okay with the principle of, hey, let's pre-approve at least some percent of each of it. Maybe we'll pay half of it upfront. And if we do the investigation and we find that they got to pay the whole, that GPA is liable, maybe we pay the whole thing. And if we find that GPA is not liable, we could work out maybe some sort of forgiveness or repayment plan, you know? At the very least, you know, even if we're wrong, somebody still was able to get some help with their medical device. I don't see that as necessarily a bad thing. And then also, this gentleman had a very fantastic idea about prophetic devices for all houses. And, you know, I, just, just on a practical level on how to make something like that work, I know we have an energy rebate program for people who buy energy, energy-efficient air conditioning units. Maybe we could have some sort of rebate program for people who buy protective devices. If that would be something, you know, we could talk policy points on and maybe hammer out something like that. Because I see that as worth something worthwhile. Not only does it protect GPA, it also helps protect the consumer, and everybody kind of wins. So if there's any way we could help subsidize that for everybody, that might not be a bad idea. And just, I'd like to thank GPA again for being collaborative in this process. Part of why we're doing these town halls is, you know, I've, I've heard the bad rep, I've heard the talk about town that we shouldn't even bother filing these claims because they're never going to pay them out anyway. And as far as I'm concerned, if it's not true, GPA needs to be out here dispelling that notion so that we can have a good relationship between our power utilities and our consumers. And if it is true, then GPA needs to be out here doing everything they can to fix it because that is an unacceptable position for people to be acting towards with their power utilities. So I, I relish the opportunity for you guys to foster this trust with the community. As it is now, GPA has been kind enough to bring out customer service reps who have direct access to their databases. So for anybody who is interested in coming to our last town hall tomorrow in Tsumooning, at the Tsumooning Senior Center, they will be able to interface directly with your account and give you some very comprehensive help as if you were going into GPA itself. So I encourage anybody in the community to please come out to our final town hall tomorrow before the Christmas season. And, you know, maybe GPA will put a reimbursement check under your Christmas tree, right? And so with that, that will be the end of our town hall discussion regarding damage claims. We will still be hanging around for at least another hour for people who are trickling in, still getting off work, for customer service reps to assist them. And we were here, if anybody has any further questions or things they want to talk about, this is what we're here for. And so with that, the Committee on Fire, Agriculture, Power and Energy Utilities, Public Transit, Unemployment Insurance, and Universal Health Insurance will continue to accept written testimony on tonight's meeting within five business days from tonight, which will be mailed to my office at 238 Archbishop Flores Street, Suite 905 of the DNA Building in Higatnia. You may also send your written testimonies to my office via email, senatorsparkinson@guamilegislature.org. Thank you all for your participation. Thank you to the village of MTM and to Mayor Rudy Paco for your hospitality. It's always good to be able to do one of these fantastic things in the home village. This town hall is adjourned, and the time is now 6:31.